Very good.
Now watch what you say.
So, but I hadn't heard that nobody else that they weren't coming, but so we're excited to continue on. And do the number six, which is the last one of our steps to to Lent and to Easter, so and it's living hope. Um, so just a reminder, so um, next week, we don't be meeting for Bible study. But uh, at the end of this, it talks about if you wanted to get together, it might be good to get together for a meal like. So if we want to get together at noon for a meal for lunch, to go somewhere, we could do that next week. Oh, so and everybody can come, so. A meal, so so you bring your husband.
Oh.
So uh, and you guys can pick a place to go, that's your favorite sound too.
And the closer it is, the more likely more people would go.
Yeah, yeah, definitely a local, a local place here, so. Uh, to make it since there's also lots going on for us pastors, as you know during Holy Week, which is great. So lots of good things, so um, and there's, uh, we have many wonderful blessings, but we could get together for for lunch. If folks want to, so we'll, we'll go through that um, as we uh, get ready and so to talk about living hope and getting ready, so has Journey to the Resurrection. Uh, has it been good information to read and? Good questions, has it been a good book?
Yes. Somebody wants to borrow my book when we're done.
You didn't write it, huh?
Bolivia.
Oh, that's all right on.
You, have you met her? Oh, she was at my house, she said, when you were there.
So.
I haven't seen.
I said, any still too, so.
Well, she's kind of dropped out.
I know.
I'm working on her, but. Six.
That turns out in my estimation, probably one of the best books, it's gonna go in the library. My kids will probably throw it away when we're gone and I'm thinking.
Well, maybe she.
You ought not to do that.
Maybe she can keep it then, huh? Bolivia.
Maybe I'll keep her till I die. Well, let her keep it if she wants to.
That was very enlightening. Right, more in depth.
Yeah. Uh, I think there were lots of good comments instead too and good questions and so. Alright, we'll pray and then we'll read our scriptures. Grace is God Almighty, we are so grateful for the many ways that you call us to truly uh, journey to the resurrection. To know all the things that you have done, to walk through the crucifixion, to be reminded that our sin uh, was given completely taken away because of what you have done on the cross. And then to know that that wasn't the end of the story, there is even more joy, more power, more light in the resurrection, so we thank you as we continue to read scripture, as we look at this in a powerful way. And know the blessings that you have for us, uh, and your scripture, your word continues to speak to our hearts and minds. Be with those who are unable to come today, and we thank you for the many ways that you will bless us. Uh, be with those, uh, all of us together in person and online, that we know that Jesus Christ is our Lord and Savior. And we rejoice in your work, in Jesus' name we pray. And um.
Amen.
So, so is, how many of you guys read Luke, but then also Matthew, Mark and John, read through all those?
You mean today?
Well, this week, yeah, so.
I had to, you can't get the differences and similarities.
Yeah.
I have a question on that, uh, with uh, Luke, but Mark, Matthew and John. What, how do I want to say this, what timeframes when they wrote this?
Mark was probably first.
Really?
That's what Christian tradition teaches, and then both Luke and Matthew probably built a little bit off of Mark. Because that's based on how much of Mark is in Matthew and Luke. And then John was last, and John was probably the, you know, since biblical historians say that it was probably before sixty-seven eighty, because John doesn't mention the destruction of Jerusalem, and if he had written it after, he might have mentioned when Jerusalem was destroyed. So uh, Mark probably fifty-five or so AD, so probably twenty years after. The earliest works in the New Testament are the letters of Paul, and then Mark. And I don't remember Luke and uh, which order Luke and Matthew came in, probably Matthew next and then Luke, but that's because Luke based all the information he had really from what Paul told him. And travels with Paul, that sounds like one of those TV travel shows.
Okay.
Now, did Paul actually? Well, he wasn't part of the group originally, he was converted later.
Yes.
How many years later?
Well, how old was or how many years like? Probably within five or six years. Uh, because Jesus, if you traditionally was uh, in thirty-three AD. And the disciples were at Pentecost. And at Pentecost, they received the Holy Spirit. And then in chapter nine of Acts is when Paul is converted. And right before that is the stoning of Stephen, so within a few years of thirty-three. I mean, it maybe even less than that.
Well, thirty-three, you were talking about, that was when Jesus died, thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yes. I'm sorry, I don't do ACE.
Because I was thinking of thirty-three, where'd you come up with thirty-three, and I thought that's probably how old Jesus was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll start with Luke twenty-four, verse one. Ron will let you start and we'll take turns after each screen and everybody's got a wonderful voice, so we'll get to hear all of that.
On the first day of the week, very early in the morning, the women took the spices they had prepared and went to the tomb. They found the stone rolled away from the tomb.
Number three?
Yeah.
Did you read two?
Screens, we're doing screens.
Each read a screen, send the next.
Number three.
Yeah.
But when they entered, they did not find the body of the Lord Jesus. I keep going?
The whole screen.
While they were wondering about this, suddenly two men in clothes that gleamed like lightning stood beside them. In their fright, the women bowed down with their faces to the ground. But the man said to them, why do you look for the living among the dead?
He is not here, he has risen. Remember how he told you while he was still with you in Galilee? The son of man must be delivered over to the hands of the sinners. Be crucified and on the third day be raised again. Then they remembered his words. When they came back from the tomb, they told all these things to the eleven and to all the others.
It was Mary Magdalene, Joanna, Mary, the mother of James, and the others with them who told this to the apostles. But they did not believe the women, because their words seemed to them like nonsense. Peter, however, got up and ran to the tomb. Bending over, he saw the strips of linen lying by themselves, and he went away, wondering to himself what had happened.
Now that same day, two of them were going to a village called Emmaus, about seven miles from Jerusalem. They were talking with each other about everything that had happened. As they talked and discussed these things with each other, Jesus Himself came up and walked along with them.
Ron, read that.
That's no better. I don't even know what that is, go away, we'll go back.
But they were kept from recognizing him. He asked them, what are you discussing together as you walk along? They stood still, their faces downcast. One of them named Cleophas asked him, are you the only one visiting Jerusalem and does not know the things that have happened there in these days?
What things, he asked, about Jesus of Nazareth, they replied. He was a prophet, powerful in word and deed before God and all the people. The chief priest and our rulers handed him over to be sentenced to death, and they crucified him. But we had hoped that he was the one who was going to redeem Israel.
And what is more, it is the third day since all this took place. In addition, some of the other women amazed us. They went to the tomb early this morning, but didn't find his body. They came and told us that they had seen a vision of angels who said he was alive.
Then some of the companions went to the tomb and found it just as the women had said, but they did not see Jesus. He said to them, how foolish you are, and how slow to believe all that the prophets have spoken. Did not, not the Messiah have to suffer these things and then enter his glory?
And beginning with Moses and all the prophets, he explained to them what was said in all the scriptures concerning himself. As they approached the village to which they were going, Jesus continued on as if he were going farther. But they urged him strongly, stay with us, for it is nearly evening, the day is almost over. So he went in to stay with them.
When he was at the table with them, he took bread, gave thanks, broke it, and began to give it to them. Then their eyes were opened and they recognized him, and he disappeared from their sight. They ask each other, were not our hearts burning within us while he talked with us on the road and opened the scriptures to us?
They got up and returned at once to Jerusalem. There they found the eleven and those with them, assembled together and saying, it is true. The Lord has risen and has appeared to Simon. Then two told what had happened on the way, and now Jesus was recognized by them when he had broke the bread.
While they were still talking about this, Jesus himself stood among them and said to them, peace be with you. They were startled and frightened, thinking they saw a ghost. He said to them, why are you troubled, and why do doubts rise in your minds?
Look at my hands and my feet, it is I myself. Touch me and see, a ghost does not have flesh and bones as you see I have. When he had said this, he showed them his hands and feet. And while they were, while they still did not believe it because of joy and amazement, he asked them, do you have anything to eat? They gave him a thing, peace. They gave him a piece of broiled fish, and he took it and ate it in their presence.
He said to them, this is what I told you while I was still with you. Everything must be fulfilled, and it's written about me in the law of Moses, the prophets and the songs. And he opened their minds so they could understand the scriptures. He told them, this is what is written. The Messiah will suffer and rise from the dead on the third day.
And repentance for the forgiveness of sins will be preached in his name to all nations, beginning at Jerusalem. You are witnesses of these things. I am going to send you what my father has promised, but stay in the city until you have been clothed with power from on high.
So as you heard it again, anything jump out?
I liked, I don't know if I ever noticed the naming of the three women and then and the other women.
There were more than three?
Well, it says that he lists three women and then says, and the other women.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I had ever noticed that before or not, because I knew one of the gospels mentioned three women specifically. And I think John's just says Mary or two Marys.
One says two, yeah.
Right. But.
Then I saw Jo- Jo- Joanna.
Joanna.
Is that a new name?
It's not new, but I don't remember seeing, seeing specifically or saying that one before.
Uh, and I've shared before, um, on a Good Friday service, uh, the pastor was preaching and she said the women were the first to see the resurrected Christ, and the first to go and tell the good news. So if you're called to go and tell, go and do it. That was part of my call, okay, I'll go and tell, I'll go and do it, so. Uh, again, which is what anyone is supposed to do, if you're called to go and tell, then go and do it. You said, but the women were the first to see, so. Um, how many of you been on a walk to Emmaus? You've read Luke for sure, if you're. So, nobody else, nobody's gone on Emmaus? Alright, so that's, and it emphasizes that, you know, Jesus was with those people, but they didn't recognize them. And kind of that reminder, Jesus is with us, you know, he is here, he's walking alongside with us, we don't always recognize it. And now, and and knowing that, so that's one of the, the ways they use the uh, gospel of Luke two on the walk to Emmaus, that it's there, so. Um, alright, similarities and differences on page eighty-one. What are some of the things that you observed? And again, as John said, it's not exactly sure how many women were there, there's different references of uh, what women had gone to the tomb to anoint his body, and what women saw Jesus for sure, alive, resurrected. It varies according to the different gospels.
Um, Mary, she was talking about him, where is he, and he was behind her.
Yeah, he was there and she didn't recognize him.
Well, then yeah, the same thing for the two walking to Emmaus, they didn't recognize him either. And, you know, it's, it's puzzling how they could not recognize him when their hearts were so focused on him. So it's almost as if in some way they, they were obscured from being able to see him.
Well, yeah, but again, making it S, how many of you guys know Jesus almost your whole life?
What was the question?
How many of you've known Jesus almost your whole life? And then has there been a time when Jesus has done something, the Lord's done something, and like, oh, I didn't realize it, or I didn't recognize he was present, or other people felt the power of the spirit and like, oh, I, I didn't, you know. There's other times that were still, even though we've known him uh, for a long time or known him very intimately. There's still some times that we don't recognize his work, we don't recognize his presence. So I don't think it's a brand new thing, well, different thing.
Ex- except that we've never been in the same room with him when he was in bodily form.
Physically, yes.
Yeah.
But spiritually, it's just as good.
Oh, right, I'm, I'm not saying that, I mean, God says it's even greater in his gospel to, to believe without seeing.
Yeah.
I think he did a lot of teaching, but they didn't absorb what he was saying. And it's just like they're in two different worlds, and uh, then even after those things happened, he had to remind them that it was going to happen.
Yeah.
And it did happen.
And really go through the, it sounded like, you know, that he really went back through the prophets, everything that it, that he fulfilled that was shared and stuff too, and they did say, well, you don't know about Jesus, you know. They did have that compassion, that understanding, that desire, but not understanding the resurrection yet too. Other differences between the four gospels?
Well, there in Matthew, they was talking about there was an earthquake, and then the angels rode the stone over and was setting on them, then they scared the guards away. And uh, so then the two women went in there, and then I was surprised about this, the guards went to their priest and told him about this, oh, don't say anything, sorry.
The priest said that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, keep it to yourself, and then later, they spin a lie saying that someone had stolen the body. Because they were guarding it, and what should have happened to the guards, because they failed in their duty at that time and in that culture was, they probably would have been killed.
Yeah, what happened to the guards?
We don't know.
They passed out, being in the presence of God?
Yeah, and that's, there is differences.
Right.
Yeah, between the angels, you know, how many were there, you know, or, you know, seeing them as well as the soldiers. Uh, as you said, in Matthew, the soldiers were paid to lie, so. They got paid, don't, don't say that the, the tomb was empty, yeah, so. Uh, other differences?
They were talking about Jesus in verses thirty-six, thirty-seven, then all of a sudden he appeared to them. The whole group was terrified, thinking they were seeing a ghost.
And in one of the uh, gospels, it specifically says that they were in a locked room. The, the door was barred and somehow he came in, which, I mean, suddenly appearing is almost the same thing, but, you know, but.
How do you get in here?
Uh, we also have that, um, in one, you know, Mary goes back and tells them and, and then Peter and, and the other disciple, which we assume is John, come back and see, you know, but that's not in everyone that they come back and see.
Right.
Immediately the empty tomb, so. But, but again, four gospels share different things about the story, uh, different ways that they see it, understand it. And, uh, but together, I think it shares so much of the resurrection and, and the great things about it.
I was really surprised that at the time when Jesus said he was hungry, and he ate. I go, okay, are we gonna be able to eat? And then he said that, uh, because he wasn't a spirit, he said, I'm not a spirit, and he says, you know, feel my hands or look at my feet, and he's got bones, and I go, okay.
Yeah, well, and, and the uh, in Revelation, when we have the great banquet, the wedding banquet, where we sit at the table of Jesus, I, I don't think it's a coincidence that it's a banquet where food would be served. And think about how much enjoyment we get out of eating in our lives, will it be absolutely necessary? I don't know, but uh, it talks about there being trees that are going to produce fruit beyond measure and so.
I've read a book about that, yeah.
It, it makes it sound like we'll probably be interested in eating, whether we have to or not.
I think our culture has been enamored with ghosts, they make movies about ghosts, we don't have an idea of what a ghost is. Of course, the Bible, Holy Ghost, I mean, so the, the being of Jesus, spiritual, physical, whatever, Jesus was not identical to what we understand as a ghost. So when he's spiritual, he's the same in that he can eat real food, but he's different that he can disappear and appear. So our idea of Jesus is not a ghost.
Yeah.
It's something different than that, and I got a hunch, much better.
Absolutely, no, no pain, no, no tears.
That he went through the walls? And different enough that they didn't recognize him at first, you know.
Yeah, I've always, every time, that's been brought up a number of times, didn't recognize him. And somebody's trying to explain this, and we said, well, maybe you wore a hoodie.
Had a hole in his robe pulled up over his head like if they might do in a storm or something.
Really a different spiritual being, he had a hoodie, that's.
Well, he, no, he died and you don't expect him.
Right, that's, yeah, that's part of it.
But while the dying is easy.
Yeah, but you don't.
We can, we can all do that, the resurrection's the hard part.
Yeah.
But I love it that, um, when he, you know, he says Mary's name, Rabbi, you know. Again, Jesus is gonna say our name too.
Right.
And he knew who it was.
And we're gonna, we're gonna know.
You know, those chapters in John twelve and thirteen, where he's talking about the sheep know my voice.
She responded.
Yeah.
That seems funny that the, the two women knew him and fell down to their, you know, knees, but the, the men.
First to worship.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What did men do?
Nothing, they didn't recognize him.
They didn't believe him at first, they didn't believe that he could even have risen, even though he told them.
Yeah.
We say three times, but if he told them three times, and they wrote it down three times, he probably told them that a hundred times in three years.
So they did not believe anything he said?
And, but the women were at the cross though too.
Yeah, that, well, that's true.
The women were at the cross, they actually walked with them.
His mother was there and another Mary at least.
Yeah, rub it in.
It was unbelief, unbelief, alright, page eighty-two. So what are you supposed to, followers of Jesus felt and thought just after the Lord was crucified? And again, you can also go ahead and go to the part, what do you feel about his crucifixion?
I didn't, if he's a good person, he did not sin, why is he dying on the cross?
I remember when I was a little girl, and they'd always have that on TV, and I would sit there and just cry.
Hmm, yeah, it's not fair.
No, I, I thought, I just couldn't understand why.
Well, I wish we would, yeah, and hopefully now we understand some.
Yeah.
But I wish we would feel that on Good Friday and cry every time.
At his loss, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Every, I mean, it's a whole reason why we honor Good Friday, whole reason why we honor that day, because we see his passion, his depth, and realize how good it is for us, but how awful it was for him. I mean, awful enough that he cries out, my Lord, my God, why have you forsaken?
And I don't understand that.
Well, some people say that the sins of the world are poured out upon him at that point, and he feels separated from God because he's stained with the sins of humanity.
Okay, okay.
The sins of the world.
Yeah, yeah, and not just up to that point, but our sins.
Yeah.
Even though we haven't even been born.
So, and Psalm twenty-two is what he's quoting, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Why are you so far from saving me, so far from the words of my pronoun? Oh my God, I cry out by day, but you do not answer by night and not silent. But it continues on, you know, he's feeling all this, uh, and he goes on, um, let's see if I find out. My strength is dried off like a pot shirt, but you, oh Lord, verse nineteen of twenty-two, verse nineteen. But you, oh Lord, be not far off, oh my strength, come quickly to help me. Deliver my life from the sword, my precious life from the power of the dogs. Rescue me from the mouth of the lions, save me from the horns of the wild oxen, I will declare your name to my brothers. So the end of Psalm twenty-two shares that, you know, continues, um, and it continues on to, um, the, you know, if he's quoting it, it's the feeling, but yet knowing the rest of the story that God will be there, so. Yeah, uh, the very last verse, twenty-two, thir- verse thirty-one, they will proclaim his righteousness to a people yet unborn, for he has done it. So that's part of it, what I've heard before.
In Revelation, he has done it, so.
Well, this is still Psalm twenty-two, but yes, it also connects with, with Revelation as well, you know, so. Yeah, so that quote is the feeling that he's probably going through, but also with, with the Psalm and knowing the rest of the story.
Okay, I can see him, what do you call it, vacillating back and forth?
Humanity.
Physical world, spiritual world.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Human and divine, he's both, and yeah. Human and divine, he's both, and, yeah, completely.
He says, why have you forsaken me? And yet he knew that was gonna happen when he prayed in the garden.
But by, I think it's evidence of his prayer. That he asked God to have the cup removed, that even though he knows it's going to happen, he knows that it's. While he was born, he still doesn't wanna go through it.
Then he gives up and.
Willing to go through it is not the same as wanting to go.
It's a process.
Who wants to die?
And who wants to drive and die in a whole, such a horrible way? Don't we all wanna go to bed and wake up in heaven? Isn't that it, write down, you know, take me, Lord. Now I lay me down to sleep, I pray the Lord my soul to take.
That's without going through the process.
None of us wanna go through a hard dying process.
Shortcut. It's not gonna be a shortcut.
Anything else on question one or question two, then?
Well, I put that all hope was gone, that they felt lost and afraid, they didn't know what was ahead. But also, they were starting to think a little bit about all that he had said. And maybe there was just the smallest glimmer, especially for Peter and John that went to the tomb. At least according to the Gospel of John, that went to the tomb and start, it started to make them think. That this is exactly what Jesus told us over and over again. Maybe it's true.
And the women told him too. Women didn't have much clout, did they? Except Peter. Peter went to him.
Tricks are working, no, that's silly rabbit.
Uh, anything about Jesus' resurrection body that you learned? Or were reminded of, or something that emphasized that, like, that's important?
What verse are we going?
Question two.
Jesus himself came along and joined them and began walking beside them, that sounds like the Amos walk. But they didn't recognize him.
In some way, maybe just in their anguish, they, he was obscured from them and they didn't recognize him, like.
Well, he's dead, this can't be him.
Well, and that could be that, that, you know, they just. They knew that he had been killed on the cross and so it can't be Jesus, so maybe. Even though they should have been looking for their Savior.
Maybe.
Cause he told enough people that he was.
Three times told him, yeah. He did, he told him he would come back to life. So, and I like this question, how might this inform your expectations or hopes about the future resurrection bodies? That believers in Jesus will enjoy, if we understand Jesus' resurrection body, what's it say, we talked briefly about that? What's it say about believers' resurrection?
Well, I think we will have some of those gifts, maybe not all of those gifts. I don't know that we'll have the ability to be in, move like that, but.
Why not?
But why not, right, I don't.
You mean come back and visit?
The best of them. Spiritual. Yep, that's what places people do, but we can. If we're raised in the likeness of the body of Christ, we will walk through walls, we'll fade and appear and. Different, it's a different universe. It's, it's something we can't do and don't even know how. As a mathematician, it's, it's, we have this. Third dimension, if you count time, the fourth dimension, you're gonna be in the fifth and sixth and seventh dimensions. So it confirms and just gives me all the hope in the world. Let's go.
Come, come, Jesus, come. Yeah, well, if he comes in the clouds, then. I'm ready.
Kelly, did you have any responses on that one?
Which one, what, what was it?
So, how might this, uh, inform our expectations and hopes of future resurrection for believers that we will enjoy?
Great hope, great promise.
You see in life after death?
Absolutely.
Well, it gives me great hope when my parents passed away. To know that, I'll see them. Well, we know them, whom are gone, but we know.
It's like.
I'd say sure.
People you.
I, I don't know that, I'm sorry. I don't, will know them, but I don't think they'll have the importance in our lives as. Being Jesus' presence will have. I mean, it'll be wonderful to know them, but knowing Jesus and. Having that continual presence of him in our lives will be, I think, obviously, as it should be now, more important, but. We'll really be living into that.
I see people every once in a while and I said, do I know you? You think we'll look into their eyes and think you might know them and ask? I saw a couple in a Burger King today, this guy had this long beard. And then I looked at her and she looked so old, and I said, do I know this couple? And she told me her name, I'll pay your, I said, no, yes, I don't know you.
Promise is we shall know as we have been known, and that is perfect.
That makes sense.
And we will love as we've been loved, and that's why the idea of no marriage in heaven makes a lot of sense. If I love you perfectly and you perfectly, there's no distinction, no preference. No number ones and number twos, what a wonderful place to be.
In other words, you won't recognize your family.
Of course I will, only well. But we will love them as much as we love everybody else, it's perfect love.
Yeah, yeah, the idea of glory is, um, a lot to grasp of what it's gonna be like, but, um, knowing that piece. And nearly, as you said, seeing family and, and knowing.
And we'll remember the stories, we'll enjoy the stories, but so will the stories of our neighbors.
Or enjoy those too.
I do that at the History Center all the time, these are our ancestors, your ancestors, my ancestors. They're part of our family. I enjoy their stories and they might enjoy mine, I think they will.
So, and then the third question, observing the story of resurrection that encourages your faith. And confidence now, again, our new life, anything there that's. Helps you now, not just thinking about the future, which is great, but what about now?
Well, I remember when I was twelve years old, waiting on John and Mary June Parks to pick me up to take me to a youth meeting. And I remember preacher preaching about hell. I have dreams, nightmares about it. And I think, uh, now that I know more, that, uh. I don't need to worry about that, Jesus has paid for that.
So you don't have to live in that fear.
Yeah, take away the fear. Now we know the truth. We know whose side we're on.
I think to me, it, that the gospel is true.
We're claiming that, aren't we?
You know, and if we, if we had doubts that it wasn't true. The resurrection is evidence that it was true, it couldn't happen by accident.
Well, especially with all the Mark, Luther, and all, all telling about the same story. I mean, you got one person saying it, well, I don't know, but then you've got so many.
And all, all loving disciples were obedient and kept sharing. Too, um, they believed that he died on the cross and resurrected, you know, and they gave their lives for that.
Those who did not wanna believe were the ones tried to crucify them, yeah.
If we're on question two, I wanna read it because I wrote it down. To me, it will be, talking about the resurrection, to me, it will be quantitatively. Better than living in this world with this body. As it was in living in the warm, comfortable womb for nine months. And then experiencing the wonders of the five senses. New life on the other side of this side promises to be amazing.
That's a good thing, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a coincidence that Jesus said we must be born again and. To use that same analogy, born again, this time into that resurrected body that's. Will be as much of a step change as, well, not as much, a much greater step change, but.
This is all physically. From the life in the womb, which for most of the time was pretty comfortable. To, wow, I can taste and see and hear, what a wonderful world. Well, that same jump will happen in resurrection. There may be ten senses. Well, of course, the ladies, they already got one, us guys don't have intuition or whatever. They will get that, John.
So Jesus was talking about a whole different world and they did not understand, they were looking at things in the physical.
Yeah, he'd been there. Of course he knew what.
So I think everything he said probably went over their head.
Well, if you think it.
In John, he uses the analogy that I go back to my father and I'm building a house for you. And so he was trying to give them an understanding of what it might be, but it's so far beyond even. I mean, our, our analogies fail in comparison to what the reality will be. Sounds like the place to be to me.
Peter, turn on page eighty-four and eighty-five, it has different summaries and stuff too. Were there any of those, uh, statements or images that jumped out at you that were meaningful?
I see this is written out, Jesus certainly lived and died, and then number two, disciples radically changed. And then number three, the tomb, I thought, hmm. Before they knew the tomb was empty? I'm reading in the book.
I look at this and you alluded to it before, these eleven men that. You know, took the resurrection, you know, sometimes we say, well, why did Jesus have to die? Well, we see why Jesus had to die because it was what was necessary to prove it to those eleven men. And from those come lots more men and women and eventually lead to us, but those eleven men. I like Chuck Colson, and if you don't know who Chuck Colson is, he was one of the Watergate conspirators. He was the White House Counsel at one point, and he tells this story that. When the, when the special prosecutor, Joretta, something like that, I forget his name. Leon Jaworski was his name, when he started offering immunity. All the rats deserted the sinking ship and lined up at the special prosecutor's. Door to get reduced sentences by spilling their guts. These eleven, and this is Chuck Colson's, I didn't think of this, these eleven stood true even unto death. And you know, we see it in scripture, somewhere it says, who will die for a lie? They didn't, so the tomb being empty. Men standing true that have been changed by the gospel, changed by the resurrection.
But they had to prove to themselves that the tomb was empty. So they had to see what the women said, if it was true or not.
Right, well, that's in, uh. When you go on into section five, it talks all about how the invalid, invalidity of the. Of a woman's testimony in a Jewish court at that time, and probably other courts as well.
You think they changed her mind about women?
Still today?
They believe them, they told the truth.
Praise the Lord, we get to share the truth, that's true. So, and I love the image of the tomb was empty, um, and I, I wish somehow we could do that. Uh, instead of the cross sometimes too. You know, it's like, I'm glad there's the empty cross that we get to choose like, but the empty tomb, and he's risen. That, the, the resurrection is the empty tomb and we don't have that in the church, no, we don't have it on our necklaces. People, great, the, the resurrection, they all, the empty tomb, uh, that he's alive. You know, that he's alive is the, the great thing too.
All was left was his clothing.
And then number four that says world history was altered, uh, and that's what we have to pray for as well, that it continues to happen. On the next page, the details in the gospels demonstrate the truth of the claims. And one of the opportunities we have is making sure we share, and first we know, reading all four gospels, reading all four. Uh, crucifixion and resurrection stories, and then sharing the truth, uh, to other people. And finding out how much difference it can make in people's lives as we share the truth.
Well, the, the gospels don't exactly match. Is one of the things that points to their accuracy. Because it's like eyewitness testimony doesn't exactly match, but. The differences lend to the story and make it more credible, you know, if a group of liars get together and they all. They memorize their story, then every story would have exactly the same account.
Maybe, if you saw an accident, they may not all be the same.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but if a group of liars get together and rehearse their story and rehearse their testimony, then they'd. Their stories will be much more alike. And, you know, it's been years, by the time John writes this gospel, it's been years since.
How could he remember?
I mean, we, we believe that there's inspiration of a Holy Spirit too, so there's nothing that he put in there that wasn't true, just.
You suppose he might have taken notes along the way? Like, we were in Israel, we went to the cave where they found scriptures written down, somebody. Had taken the time to write things down, and that's history.
Yeah, that was for sure. And as well as the tradition back then too, was sharing the stories over and over orally. That's the way they learned because they didn't have books, you know, like the same as we do, so. Sharing the story and learning it auditorily, uh, which I am not. That's good that way, but that, that's how they did it, you know, by repeating the story over and over.
And they probably, well, they had plenty of time to do it because they didn't have other abstractions to, to TV or.
Yeah, that was those kind of things, other than all the work you had to do just to produce food and cry.
I, I'm always amazed by how little emphasis we put on. Give us this day our daily bread in our life because that's, that's a throwaway statement, but for them. I mean, it was a prayer every day probably, all the trouble you had to go through to get a, get a meal.
Yeah.
Oh my goodness.
So on page ninety, it says an old song, says rejoice heavenly power, sing choirs of angels. See if I know that song?
What's the name of it? What's the name of it?
I don't know. It doesn't have the name of it. She hears the message on page ninety where it says singing.
They might have changed the words a little bit. Sing choirs of angels, that sounds familiar.
Right, yeah, but not the rest of it.
Yeah, this might be an old song.
Older than me anyway.
We rerouted it. We wrote it.
I know lots of songs. Alright, life application, again, these are important things. Uh, and if you've not filled it out, really encourage you to fill that out because that's the most important thing of not just reading the scripture, how is it applied to my life? Uh, how can I use this? How does God want me to use this? How can we continue to have it speak to our hearts? And real importantly, uh, then to share it with others. So how does the resurrection give you hope? Uh, especially life after death and God's plan for the world, hope for the present? So what are some of the things you might have written down there?
Well, I don't have number one marked here unless I, unless that's the one I didn't mark it.
Do you want to hear the words to that song? Rejoice heavenly powers, sing choirs of angels, exalt all creation around God's throne. Jesus Christ, our King, is risen. Sound the trumpet of salvation. Rejoice, rejoice, oh, earth in shining splendor, radiant in the brightness of your King. Christ is conquered, glory fills you, darkness vanishes forever. Rejoice, oh, mother church, exalting glory, the risen Savior shines upon you. Let this place resound with joy, echoing the mighty song of all God's people. My dearest friends, standing with me in this holy light, join me in asking God for mercy, that he may give his unworthy minister grace to sing his Easter praises. It's a Catholic song.
Okay, you can sing it for Sunday.
We can listen to it if you wanted.
Oh, there's a tune to it, huh?
Maybe afterward.
So, okay, well, that's the, the one darkness, you know, we don't have darkness anymore. And that should be as Christians, we shouldn't have darkness if, uh, as I tell folks, if, if something comes up that you're feeling that darkness, that pain, that fear, that, the untrust, you know, turn it over to the Lord, you know, the emotions might come, turn it over. We shouldn't have darkness once we know the light of Christ. So I like that part of that too, and so. Right. Other things about the hope for you now and for the future.
In the here and now. Again, I wrote this down. I feel more comfortable. I want to get it right. It's like knowing your wife is actually really pregnant and you have all of these remaining months to live in hope. It's a good solid living hope for the future. So it's, it's from a guy's point of view, knowing eight months, maybe seven, that's a long time away, but to live in the hope in the present day, knowing something good is coming.
That's a good, I, you know, way, because it's a new life that is coming, something different that you hadn't seen before. You know, we haven't seen all of heaven. Some people have images of it. I've had, um, you know, visions or dreams of it, but we get to, you know, something brand new, a new life is coming. Any other hopes?
Well, I put that it's our only true hope, and then I'm a big Paul fan, and so from first Corinthians fifteen fourteen, and if Christ has not been raised from the dead, then all our preaching is useless and your faith is useless. And so it's, it is, then I wrote the cornerstone, it is the rock upon which our entire house is built.
Sometimes, sometimes we have to say, not what we feel, but what's acoming?
What is true? What is right?
Sometimes you get down in the dumps. I've heard of people saying, praise the Lord, and it kind of changes the atmosphere.
Well, for the present, seems to me with this, that maybe we can get, we, we know of the future. Maybe we can stop and enjoy all that's around us. I mean, just looking at a sunset.
That'll, that Jesus came to give us life and that abundantly, that, that's not just talking about after our death, but it's talking about here and now because we can live into this hope that we have.
Right. I remember going over to Dad's house out in the country. He'd sit on, be sitting on the front porch, looking to the west, watching the sun going down. He sounded like that was a comfort to him, watching.
And during the day, he watched the clouds.
He watched?
He watched the clouds.
Oh.
And, uh, I resonate with that. I do that. I guess watch the clouds. Beautiful.
And things are always changing. Is there something to that?
Yeah, war someplace else, but.
Yeah.
Not, not in my mundane day, I see the clouds.
Yeah, I wrote, every ordinary mundane event can still know God's power, peace, and joy. And then the exceptional circumstances, really good or really bad, Jesus is there with us. He went through it all, so.
It's a good one.
Yeah. Alright, what helps your faith grow even through struggles?
I, naturally questioned, I, I don't think I ever really struggled. I mean, you know, the day I believed, something happened. I, it was living my faith like this, not my sight. I, I just never struggled, but I questioned everything. I still do. Maybe I'm just blessed, but. I mean, I remember at Asbury, we drove around half the night, this poor fellow student, and he was struggling. It was, we even wound up knocking on the professor's door at one o'clock in the morning, but he was in angst. He did not know where he was going. And we prayed for him, and we rode around. I know what struggle is, I've seen it in other people. Well, man.
Yeah, reminds me to it when I was at seminary. Again, God sends people to me that are struggling. And, um, it was another student. And she said, I know God has a plan for me to get married. And she goes, I'm attracted to women. I need you to pray for me. So I was like, yeah, I'll pray for you. You know, and she knew I was already married or anything, do, you know, but, um, she knew what was right. But she was struggling, and again, this was years ago, twenty-five years ago. And I was struggling with that and, um, relatively young, so trying to help her, you know, again, follow God's ways. She's there at seminary to be a pastor. And again, a conservative place, they would tell her what's right and stuff too. Uh, but she was struggling with that, that Satan was pushing her to try to, wanting something different that wasn't right. And uh, so it's like, yeah, I'll pray for you. So, so I don't know the rest of her story. So hopefully she continued to find and do what was right and just, I know God's got a plan for me to get married to a man, so.
Okay.
I pray that you don't have that, so.
Devil can play havoc with us when he can.
In my story, thankfully, Terry left. He'd been miserable if he'd gone in to be a pastor. I'm just glad for him. And, uh, he was doing well in, uh, secular employment after, I like happy.
Talking about a former minister or?
No, a student, Terry, get his last name. Terry went back to Texas and.
You wanted Asbury, the one that you were telling about at Asbury, that you drove around.
No, this was just more that he could, could handle. I mean, it was the whole thought of being a pastor.
You have to make sure you're called to be able to do this job, so.
And he recognized this, I just about made a mistake.
So, at New Room Conference, we, uh, they did lots of videos about the Asbury University revival. So he had people testifying. And again, that was something that helped people grow. You know, several people testified of what it meant, um, and it was just a blessed time, so. Um, and that, some people thought the revival should be loud and really physical and, and they said, no, it's really, most of it was pretty quiet and, and people pushed to go confess. Uh, not just about worship and being loud and rejoicing that way, uh, but a peace um, and a peace from confession even, that, of turning to God and turning over all your sins, um, so. And some pastors that went down there that I know that are wonderful people. Uh, one of them was pushed to go up there and confess, bow down and confess his sins and change and, and, well, great.
We saw it on video.
Yeah.
That was a neat.
I was there.
Oh, you went?
Nineteen seventy.
Oh, yeah, so that went into. Yeah, my friend heard about it.
Right, anything else to help your faith grow?
Well, there comes a time when you have to believe it or you don't.
Yeah.
So you have to make up your mind. And then even though it doesn't look literal, you walk in it as if it's true. Then you know you made the right move. Because enemy can play with our minds.
Yes. Yeah, I think something that I preach about regularly too is prayer is what helps our faith grow. And, um, again, sharing too, I had more than one person come up and say, um, because again, it's just, I'm just sharing the gospel, you know, of John, that, um, Jesus prays for himself, and so I had people, you know, pray for themselves at church. Thank you so much. That meant, I even had somebody who watched it online. Thank you so much. We watched, you know, so, uh, how important it was. Again, it's just following Jesus's, I'm just sharing what Jesus said to do, what he did and telling people to do that, and they, it was such a good thing. And one of the, um, Blue Ensemble, I'm so glad I was here because you said to pray for myself. And, uh, so again, prayer is important, following God's words is important, so.
Even for yourself.
Yep. Jesus did it, we should too, so. Alright, next page. So, helping other people believe. What do we need to do? Three specific ways that living hope you enjoy could spread or be shared with others. Again, if you've not been able to write it before, I really encourage you to write down three things that you should share with other people.
I think a life, a life or to live a life like Christ mattered. That we let Christ change us. So when we're with people that knew us before we were Christians, that they should be able to see that we're different. So living like our relationship with Christ mattered.
Sometimes telling people that God loves them is reassuring.
Yep.
And he cares for you. And you can give your own testimony, he changed my life.
I got that one too. Your, your testimony, because most of us are, are afraid to share our testimony.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be a, just a one time when you accepted Christ, just that, again, those are great stories, I, I mean, amazing things. But we should continue to have testimonies. My God's been at work still, you know, this week.
Up to date, up to date.
As well as past, you know, it's, it's great to hear the past, but God's not done working, so we should recognize that, yeah.
It's a process.
Other specific ways of living hope that you enjoy could be spread or shared with others.
Well, there's always hope and prayer.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And it's, it's always been nice to just be kind to people.
And sometimes just listening to them.
Yep.
Right, yeah.
I, um, I guess I did two out of three. One was give an answer, give an ask. You know, sometimes we're asked. I mean, I spent thirty-five years telling people how to live.
Right, yeah.
But that doesn't really cut it. Uh, if, if you're not answering questions that people are asking, it, you're not going to be heard.
Agreed, yeah.
So at least be ready and willing and able to give an answer for the faith that lies within you. And secondly.
That sounds like scripture.
I figured, yeah, I certainly got it. The other one was, I think it's important to be where questions might be asked.
There you go.
So not just, not just, it's important for us to show up at church, that's important for us to be out there.
Right, but I would start with being in a church situation with people that might be asking those questions.
Yeah.
And that includes Sunday School and Bible studies and I've noticed over the years, and in this church in particular, I don't have a clue who my brothers and sisters in Christ are. I don't know how many members are in the church. I asked when they first came here, oh, around four hundred and some.
Really?
And I just gave up asking. I don't have a clue. I don't know whether it's a hundred or two hundred.
I don't know either, actually.
And what makes the difference was because there's a person behind that number. You know, I wanted to know who my, what was my flock, who are these people?
Yeah, the great thing too, right now, I, I keep discovering, there's more people watching on live stream, again, since the pandemic, people are doing that more. But they are watching and they're getting it because I just saw someone at Common Grounds. And they said, oh, and they introduced me to their son. And, and so, this is Pastor Jania from Grace Methodist Church, you know, and we watch her online. I was like, great adult, since we're online, who, but I was like, and that they wanted, you know, it was an adult son, and I was like, good, you know, so there are more people. And I had met them once, you know, but there are more people out there that are getting God's word. And so praise the Lord for that, um, you know, but, so trying to, to, to reach. Uh, God, again, I, I had about a specific things, um, it said specific ways that we should share. And so the first thing that God had me write down was prison ministry. And it's, when I was asked about that when I first got here, I'm like, no. But that was the first thing that, that I thought of to write down, so I was like, okay, so I got to figure out how to add that. Good thing. And then campus life, working with them, and then funerals. Uh, again, being a pastor, funerals are one of the opportunities for each people who may not come to church other than a funeral, um, or may not have a pastor talk to them other than a funeral, and you get to share the gospel, the good news. Uh, and you, you can't say for sure about the person who died, what happened to them. But you can say for sure that Jesus died for us and those that are there can come to know him. And then so, um, so those are the three specific ways that I was pushed to write down, so. So this is going to happen. Alright, Philippians three ten, do you have that one?
Now, that's, this is a whole new area, a new pasture filled with clouds.
Alright, John, you want to read it?
I want to know Christ and experience the mighty power that raised him from the dead. I want to suffer with him, sharing in his death.
Oh, we, we just want to take the first part, right? We want to know power, we want to experience him, resurrection.
I want the Savior part, I don't need any of that Lord part.
Certainly don't want this suffering.
Oh, no, no, that's hard.
So, has anybody ever suffered for Christ? Or because you know Christ, you've suffered, been made fun of? Or because you know Christ, you've suffered, been made fun of, or?
Maybe my feelings were a little hurt. But I can't really say that it was true suffering, but.
I've heard people say something about Goody Two Shoes. I want to say, well, I'm not good except through Christ, you can know him too. We need to come up with answers, don't we?
You remember that for a long time.
Oh, yeah, I heard that once when I was working. And I, one place I went to apply for a job working for an engineer, and this lady says, and how'd you know about this job? I said. Your mother in law. So I figured there's a wall there, eh? She's suspicious of her mother in law. So I didn't get that job. Oh, dear.
So how about the delps in Ecuador? Do you think they suffer for Jesus?
Oh.
Ecuador? Oh, yeah.
What was the question again?
Do you think the delps in Ecuador, do you think they suffer for Jesus?
Oh.
I.
They may.
It's a bad place, uh, and right now in Haiti. There's Christians there.
We've been there and it's sad. And you always wonder about people who are in charge. I've heard of soldiers around there watching people, and maybe it was a good thing. Now it's chaos, they killed their president. So I don't know the answer unless they bring somebody from the outside to. Put a firm hand on a situation. Those people are already poor, they don't need something like that. Don't know who to trust and who's gonna get shot. That's sad.
Well, we're not there.
And I hear a lot of people are coming, they're getting out of there if they can. They're probably coming to US.
Well, a lot of them's Americans there.
Mm hmm, right.
Yeah, we had a missionary from our church in Villa, wasn't it? She went over there and worked in the hospital. What was her name?
I know Dale Stickle at Gem Town made many trips down there.
Haiti?
And very involved in building the school.
Oh.
And I know he'd be heartbroken if he were still with me.
Yeah.
And I've been there twice myself, I know. But living in Hartford City, I don't know, believe me, I suffer much, and if I wasn't a Christian, I wouldn't have to worry about. Prophecy or six and slides and. And batteries that die in the middle of your, so, you know, and whatever, and and it just goes on and on and on. Something disrupts the service. And it's this and it's that, and I just. I suffer for that. Because. The people, they're used to looking at TV and everything, you know, the audio is perfect. And the timing is almost always perfect. And you're just go from glory to glory to glory, and then church, it crashes and crashes and crashes, and sometimes I crash. And it just drives, I hurt. I just. That's, I use that as a very specific example. I'm segueing from. How they help to suffering. Believe me, if you care, there's a lot. There's a lot of places to suffer at the church. And people that, you know, we don't see anymore. And I assume all those around here, we care and it hurts. Whether we disaffiliate or been disaffiliated, there's a lot of hurt going on.
And we just had a pastor, um, that we know, when we were with them, um, he was. A very faithful member of the church, and then he got called to to preach, uh, and started an independent church, was there for ten years. Um, and I don't know what happened exactly, but his wife posted, um, that he had to leave. Cause he had suffered so much, people have been so critical. And she wrote down too, how almost every pastor is criticized, unfaith, you know, just unfairly and. You know, he, he, she said like he had tried to do everything, uh, that God wanted, and people didn't understand and didn't accept and. Um, so he and I believe he's just left the church and said he's not gonna pastor anymore. And just, I feel so sorry for him, I know, and his wife. Um, she was a missionary to Africa, she's done lots of things, they adopted children, they, all kinds of stuff that they've been together and. Um, served, um, so. But she, she posted, I had, so I was trying to see if I could find it real quick on Facebook, uh, like, every pastor goes through suffering, so please pray. Please pray for pastors, I, you know, not just for him. She was saying, please pray for all pastors, cause they suffer of the 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 criticism that so many people have.
They compare you to former pastors and all that stuff.
Oh.
We went through that in one church. You couldn't measure up.
This is completely secular, but. Mother, first father died, and then mother died, and my brother and I became administrators of the estate, and we talked to the auctioneer and all of that. And I just never forget it, he just like, uh, after a lot of discussion, he, he kind of looked me in the eye and he said, I got one thing to do. Whatever you do. Will be wrong. The wisdom.
Look who said that?
The auctioneer.
Oh.
I mean. That relates. To the ministry, you know, I don't, I don't care how hard you try, somebody's gonna be open and. That was maybe the inappropriate thing to say at that time, and my spirit was not where it should have been, but somebody's gonna get upset at something. And I really liked what I heard across the table, someone else is watching. And that was so good, and I was so blessed, and we don't even know. Some things you do are right, they really are.
And, you know, the flute ensemble is who don't usually come, and one of them comes up. Yep. Again, it's, it's just God's word speaking to her, but I'm glad I was able to share that, you know, be able to use by that to share his words, so.
Oh, Jesus went through the same thing. And this is a hierarchy that was always judging him, watching him.
Yep.
Had their spies out there. They were expecting things you're on.
People to betray him.
They were working on it.
So the last two questions, we can combine and, so if you haven't written something down, again, try to do that. Uh, of things that you've seen and learned from all these questions and scripture that we've been reading. Uh, but also if you would share, we're gonna, the last few minutes. Uh, if you've already written a prayer, or if you wanna just pray out loud, um. The, a prayer about our hope in the Lord, um, to share those things, so. Ron, you wanna start? We'll go around, and again, if you haven't written something down, that's okay, but I encourage you to do it later on, so. So number six, if you have a prayer or other things about how it's, God's word has changed you.
Well, I. I thought about writing one down, but I'm not good at that. So.
You can pray, I know you can.
I'm looking back and I say, well, what now, given that. We are suffering and we will suffer, that's, that's, that's just a given. There's, there's no way. Not. To care. And endure suffering. So. My prayer is, um. It's kind of like that, what mountain are you gonna die on?
Yep.
And, um. How much suffering can you take? It's a given. And my prayer is that. I remember when I'm inconvenienced and I don't really wanna do this. And my mind is kind of going crazy, it's a part of. It's a life we're called to, Jesus suffered, we've suffered, if it's not. Because Big Brother has a. Dossary on you, it's all in a folder, and we're coming for you. If it's not martyrdom. As the disciples knew martyrdom. In other ways. Bring the suffering, so I'm trusting God in my prayers to give me the strength and the endurance. To keep on suffering.
Amen. Thank you. I don't have anything written down. I guess my life, every time I move, we have to start over, making friends, so. I just have been open to people who wanna talk, and. I have two people that call me often or come and visit me, talk, so I guess I'm a sounding board.
Long suffering sounding board.
Long suffering sounding board, and I hope I can. Make a difference in their life, and sometimes it seems like it's going nowhere, so. That's where I'm at now, and then I went to visit my neighbor this week, I, she lost her husband, I went to visit them, took them some food. And two days later, he's dead. And, uh, I went over to visit them, and he says, I just had my teeth taken out, and I feel so tired. And here I took him muffins, and he had no teeth. So I homemade some pudding, took it back to him, and ground up graham crackers and put it on top. And then next thing I know, he's gone, and I thought, oh my gosh, you have no idea. Could you have said something different that would have helped him? But you, no idea what you know.
And you're reaching out to the widow.
Yeah, and I went to visit her a week ago, and I heard dog bark, and nobody answered the door. Went back yesterday, no dog, no person answered the door, so I thought, where is she? They just refinished that house and added a garage to the side of the house and. And where is she at? Is she okay?
She's not okay.
So.
Pretty much wheelchair bound.
Yeah, she is.
I'm sent to nursing home.
So I don't have any calls, I was gonna ask her for her phone number or give her mine so she can call me, hadn't even done that. So.
You are an outgoing person that reaches people.
Yes.
You are a blessed, yeah, sure, God's love, for sure.
You are not ashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ.
What am I doing?
I said, you are not ashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ, just like Paul tells us in Romans one sixty.
Yeah, not that I actually talk about him.
You do all the time.
I do?
Yes.
Well, thank you. I'd be more aware of that. I do like to cook.
Yeah.
I'm still in four H.
And that's, that's a blessed way to, to share with God's love, so, Darlene?
Well, in reading this book, it's really helped me a lot. Um. I'm starting to read the Bible in a year, and so, but this here has got me to read more scripture. And understanding a little better, so I pray that it keeps me going and keep. Understanding and just growing from it.
Praise the Lord. Again, I'm a writer, so. Lord, thank you for calling me to be on a prayer team. Thank you for calling me to lead and encourage pastors and churches. May I share the hope of Jesus in local ministries and to everyday people? Help me to grow in love and patience. I praise you for my sermons that reach grace, help me to show your grace to them, amen. Good night.
I started in question five, and one of the things that it's done for me is it's reminded me of the hope that we have. Going through this. And specifically the hope that I have. Because it's helped me to concentrate more on real relationship with Jesus. And sometimes I get. More academic when I'm thinking about sermons and less relational. Specifically the personal rate, like, relationship that I have with Jesus. And so I think that's probably an occupational hazard. But even so, it's reminded me that I have a personal relationship, and I should be living into that relationship. So my prayer was, Heavenly Father, thank you for my life. Thank you for my faith. Thank you for your creation. Thank you for your love. Thank you for your grace. Thank you for your son. And help me to be more worthy of his sacrifice each day. Thank you for being timeless and unchanging. For all, Lord, thank you, in Jesus' name.
All right, let's turn to page ninety five, and we'll do that prayers together. And then we'll decide where we're gonna eat locally next Wednesday, whoever wants to come. Let's pray together. Lord, we want to know you. We want to know the power of your resurrection. And we understand that means we will also enjoy the fellowship of your wisdom. Help us to be the living representation of who you are. Help us to do justice and have mercy. In your relationships, to confront lovingly, to resist temptation, to find and hold on to true freedom. Help us to be a part of bringing the living hope of Easter and resurrection into our present realities.
Amen.
So, if you would like to go to lunch, and who would, where would you like to go here in Hartford City?
How about the pickle?
I've got no menu, I didn't mind.
How about the pickle at? Everything I've had so far isn't good there.
How about the pickle at noon?
Are they open at noon? I'm pretty sure they have lunch, whether breakfast and lunch, I don't think, so.
Oh, I think they do.
So, all right, we'll let the other people know too, so. Again, anybody's welcome to come, so.
And that's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
So bring your husband.
Okay.
Bring your sister in laws.
Okay.
Cause they would, don't have to read, so. Hopefully they will.
Hopefully they won't get it.
Both of them have been here, have stayed here just once.
But church, they have.
Been here?
Not here.
One of them was here.
I don't think during this.
Didn't one of them come here?
No, not on this, we haven't, not on this book that we've been doing.
Oh, maybe it's another study.
Yeah, they've done Bible study before.
Yeah.
And you folks at home are welcome too. And even those who watch later.
Can't do that online, you have to come in person.
Yeah, I, we took, uh, we'd heard about it, and so I took our daughter there, and she loved it too, cause. She's a vegetarian, she only eats fish and vegetables, so.
So what is it you like? You're talking about the.
Our daughter, yeah, the pickle.
Pickle, lunch eat.
Great stuff, what?
What kind of food did you order?
So she had fish, so.
Tuna fish?
Uh, I don't think it was tuna fish, some other kind of fish.
Oh, okay, that sounds good, cause I got, um, what was it? Beggars. Beggars, something. Potatoes and it's covered with something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have baked potatoes, you can have any kind of baked potato too, there's all different kinds of that too, yeah. Yeah, they're kind of nice variety.
It wasn't, I didn't recognize it as potatoes, it sounded like it was a hobo something.
No. See y'all later.
Plenty of room there too, yeah.
What'd you say?
There's plenty of room there.
And they can give you a spatial room, you don't have to be out in the open room if you wanna be in your own.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but we can talk.
Cause those who were in, uh, exercise, uh, when we were with the wife.